Calling the city council meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The Honorable Mayor Donald Hardy will not be with us tonight. He's at the National League of Cities where he sits on that, uh, one of the sitting members on that board. At this time, we have a prayer from Pastor Wanda Williams, Hood Road Freeway Baptist Church. Is she here? I'm gonna ask one of the council members to lead us in prayer.
Dear Lord, thank you for this gathering on this evening, Lord. Thank you for allowing us to come together to do the business of the city of Kinston, Lord. Lord, allow us to have wisdom, to have discernment, to have thoughtfulness and care with the decisions we make regarding our city's future. Lord, remind us that there are people watching, our children are watching, and their futures are decided on the decisions that we make as a body to further our city and progress us forward, Lord. Give us the wisdom, give us the knowledge, give us the grace to make powerful decisions on behalf of this city to move Kinston in the right direction. Lord, protect and bless our city staff, our city leadership, and our community, Lord. Allow us to prosper and close out this year in a beautiful and healthy way. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Please, please remain standing for the prayers of the allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Solomon.
Present.
Councilmember Swenson.
Here.
Councilmember Suggs.
Here.
Councilmember Seiforth.
Here.
May I approach him? Hardy.
Present. At this time, we're gonna have a presentation to Savannah Middle School football team. We're gonna have the coaches or whoever wants to speak for the team to come to the podium over here.
Good evening. I just wanna thank, thank you for having us. Uh, this was obviously a very historic season for a contentious Savannah. Uh, we were able to go undefeated this year and win the conference.
Very good, very good.
Uh, and I don't believe that that has happened where we have won the conference in football since two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine. Um, it was a hard-fought year. We were able to keep quite a, quite a number of players. Uh, unfortunately, I'm, I'm actually happy with the turnout that we had, but we had over forty players. And for several years, we were lucky enough to carry anywhere from eighteen to twenty. So this was a fantastic year, uh, and it's a big, uh, well, it's a big reward for us to win, win the championship, especially for my boys. And, uh, I hope it, you know, moves on to, uh, you know, continuous years. And I just wanna thank, thank you for having us and letting us come out here to represent our school. Thank you.
May I have the name of the coach? Coach, may I get your name, please? Dave?
Owen.
Dave.
I just wanted to say thank you. I'm not gonna pass up an opportunity to brag on my school. I'm so happy for them and for the coaches. They've worked really hard. Um, this is the biggest football team I think we've ever had. And, um, they had to beg and borrow to get enough equipment to get us through the season. So, um, that was a good problem. Um, the boys worked hard and so did the coaches, and I couldn't be more proud of them. So, thank you again for having us all.
One, two, three, one, two, three. Okay, what do we do? What do we do? What do we do?
Also, we wanna thank the parents for coming out, too. Uh, you know, it's important when parents come out and support their kids when they participate in anything. So we thank y'all for coming out as well.
Yeah.
Citizens comments. Citizens must sign in before the start of the meeting if they wish to address the city council. Citizens should state their name and address before beginning their comments and may speak up to a maximum of three minutes. Citizens seeking assistance or asking questions will be contacted by a member of the governing body or by appropriate city staff. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
Mr. Hardy, if you don't mind, if I can take a moment of personal privilege, uh, Pastor Williams just came in. I know I did the prayer, but we can never have too much prayer. So, um, if she wouldn't mind, I know she came out this evening to join us. Uh, would love if she would still provide some inspiration for us tonight.
Amen.
Good evening. Let us pray. Father, as we pause this evening for prayer, we pause to say thank you for all of your many blessings. For this day you've allowed us to see and for this city that you hold in your righteous hand. We are thankful for your son, Jesus, the Savior of the world, and the reason we have the privilege to boldly come before your throne of grace. As this meeting moves forward tonight, I pray that the business of this city be carried out in a way that is pleasing, righteous, and just in your sight, oh Lord. Father, I pray for every city council member, our mayor, and all of our local government officials. And I ask that you would touch their eyes to see, touch their ears to hear, touch their mouths to speak, and touch their hearts and minds with the spirit of unity and your godly wisdom, equipping them to make the best decisions for this city, your beloved city, Kinston, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Madam Clerk.
Levon Grady.
Levon Grady, five oh three Summit Avenue, Kinston, North Carolina. I'm here tonight to talk, to, to speak with Mrs. Barwick. Tonight, I'm asking for a letter of apology from the planning board, from Ms. Elizabeth Blunt. It is my belief that I was not treated fairly and I was discriminated against because of where I live. I asked Ms. Blunt if she could ask the pastor to move the church van up to the side of my neighbor's house for safety reasons. She told me that the pastor had permission to park the van in the driveway and it was legally parked. The pastor said that I could see around the van and would not move it. She said that if I didn't feel safe, call the police. I called the police. He said that matter was in her hands. Councilman Chris Suggs stopped me after one of the meetings and told me he would like to help. Two weeks later, he called me in panic and told me there was nothing he could do because of Ms. Blunt. She stopped the police, she stopped, uh, Councilman Suggs. Ms. Blunt, Ms. Blunt continues to say that there is nothing she could do. Now, we're talking about a church van that stands as high as the house and as wide as the driveway, a sixteen-passenger bus. Ms. Van, Ms. Blunt's department has over thirty thousand municipal codes. These codes are there to keep the city running smoothly and safely and orderly. Her department tells every, tells everyone in Kinston or visiting Kinston what they can do and what they cannot do. Some property owners may say that nobody can tell them what to do on their property, but that's not true. Even if you own property in the city, the city has authority to tell you what to do. Example, they tell you when to walk and when you, they tell you when you're walking and when you're driving to stop. They tell you if you gotta build a house. If you, if you go, you gotta go to the city to get an addition to the house. If your neighbor is playing music too loud, you call the city. If your neighbor won't call, uh, won't, uh, cut his grass, you call the city. When we put, they tell you when you can put your grass out. The city also has easements rights and, and eminent domain. These are all codes that's in Ms. Blunt's department. I was told by a pro, I was told Pro Tim Hardy was able to get the van moved because he knows someone that knows someone. Ms. Blunt should have been able to take care of that. All she had to do was call the pastor to ask him to move the van up. She has the city code, the police, and the city council backing her up. Either she doesn't know her job or she doesn't want to do her job, or she's so in favoritism to the church. Because a vehicle may be legally parked, mean, mean that it shouldn't be in that location. A house can legal, a homeowner can legally park a tru, a truck, a trinket, a tank in his yard, but that doesn't mean that it's supposed to be there. There are circumstances alter cases. I'm sure she could have found one code out of thirty thousand to move that van. There was nothing she could do was not true. There was something she could do. She could have had that city moved, the city gives her the authority to tell that pastor to move the van. I want an apology because I don't think I was treated fairly. She said that she wouldn't want the van in her neighborhood and the pastor definitely can't put the net van in, store the van in his neighborhood. So I feel like you're one of, my neighborhood is a dumping ground for what other people don't want. Thank you. I want an apology.
Madam Clerk, would there be another?
May I get the sheet, please? I'm waiting. Jeanette Blue.
Good evening, councilmembers. Uh, I am Jeanette Blue and I live, uh, six fifteen Marcelo Drive. And I'm here again because I was here earlier in the year talking about the same thing and nothing has been done. There is an abandoned house on my block that stays open all the time. It's, the windows are open, the doors are open. It should be boarded up. I do not feel safe on that block because it's, it's an eyesore, but it's also not secure. I feel the city should be able to board up this house because it's been abandoned for five years that I've been here. I moved here from Maryland five years ago and it's been abandoned all that time. And I came earlier in this, uh, early part of this year to make this, uh, to address the council about this same issue and nothing has been done. This house is still the same way. So I would really would like someone to come out and take care of this situation. I do not feel safe on my block. I'm always calling the city about something because I live, I, I don't live like that. I don't live like that. And I'm always calling to either have the potholes, uh, uh, fixed in the street or something. Somebody's grass is too high, you know? I mean, I, I take the responsibility to, to, you know, live correctly, you know? And I know that Kinston wants to be shown as a beautiful city, okay? So I think that, uh, something needs to be done about that house, that one house, okay? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Quala Blackwell.
We, we back to the budget. Um, and I'm here because it's still out of control. Like, there's been no mention till we're gonna try to get you guys some relief. There's been a lot of bragging about the police budget's only ten million dollars, though. That's a lot compared to the sheriffs only being twelve. They got a hundred and twenty-something sheriffs plus the staff at the jail. We got sixty-seven to seventy-four police. The sheriff run the jail, the court, side, they run, they run the whole county. The police got twenty-one thousand residents. The sheriff got fifty-five. How are their income, their budgets running toe-to-toe? Somebody's off balance. And I'm back again to ask you guys to start auditing these departments because it's no way a hundred and twenty-eight people plus are jailed. Whole operations of the jail, all the operations of the court should be running toe-to-toe with sixty, sixty-seven to seventy-four people. That, that just don't even sound ethically possible. And it's time for you guys to look at, look at it, not just sit up in there and hear us. We're asking you to do forensic audits on these departments to ensure that we're spending our money because it's not just you guys' money. This is the city of Kinston money and we wanna know where is it going? Why is the police budget running toe-to-toe with the sheriff departments? This is the best way I can make you guys understand that you're gonna have to look at these departments. Because it's no way, again, a hundred and twenty-eight plus men working, patrolling twice as much as these guys, making half as much as these guys. The police come in here making fifty thousand dollars a year and they got twenty thousand residents to look out for. The sheriff come in making thirty-eight after being here. Um, they don't come in making that, that's what they make even after being here years. You guys gonna have to take, it's not going anywhere. These questions and these month numbers, they're not going anywhere. I told you guys before the election, it don't mean nothing to me about that seat. It means something to me about you guys doing something in the ones you're sitting in. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Rosemary Jones.
Coming here, Lex, it's my job. My name is Rosemary Jones, two-two-oh-nine Riley Road. Here again on these sky-high property taxes. I'm fed up, but I have hope for Kinston. Five times I stand here. First, I begged for a tax cut. Others cried, wondering how to afford food or medicine. I requested a forensic audit of the books. Second, Donna said, no way we can operate on the revenue neutral and talked about how extensive their audit is, but didn't explain how a forensic audit is different from a comprehensive audit. Third, you brought in Steve from Electric, promising a forged six-dollar budget cut. I checked my bill, I don't see it. I asked again for a budget amendment and a forensic audit. Fourth, you had a city attorney block the budget amendment I had asked for, though other North Carolina cities did it. Chris Suggs, you singled me out twice saying my home's fancy. Yes, you did. Saltwater pool, chef's kitchen. So basically, I deserve to have to pay five thousand, five hundred dollars on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house. That's a lot of money. Let me set this record straight. We worked hard, two jobs over time, raised six kids, no vacations, every dollar counted. Dreamed of a warm place to retire, found a home here in Kinston and loved it. But love doesn't fix roofs, leaks, pool liners, foundation creaks. Um, we pay for it. Every homeowner is hit, low-income, middle-class, wealthy. You need all of us to grow Kinston. Instead, you're making a ghost town, one hundred and eighteen homes for sale, sixty-five-plus foreclosures, ninety-two vacant properties, population's down six hundred since two thousand and twenty. Stop the excuses and start listening. You all campaigned, campaigned, campaigned on growth, safety, equity, transparency. You have two new coming in with fresh promises. I still want a forensic audit of the city's books to show how our money's really going. I doubt taxes will be cut this year or the budget amended. You have been busy stalling. I pray next year's true fiscal responsibility saves our town and property taxes will be lowered by both the city and county next year. I am hopeful. Words of my father, German. Thus has due gemachen. Very angry and I leave.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Madam Clerk.
Crystal Suggs.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm happy to follow that because I come here with good tidings. My name is Crystal Suggs, P.O. Box thirty-three fifty-five, Kinston, North Carolina. Today marks the final official business meeting for my son, Chris J. Suggs, as a local council member of the city of Kinston. And I want to express my deepest gratitude and pride for the dedication he has shown over the past four years. From the very beginning, Chris committed himself to creating meaningful, positive change in our community. His compassion, leadership, and willingness to step forward, often when it wasn't easy, has made a real difference in the lives of many. From a young child, Chris has always expressed a strong desire to learn everything he could about government and leadership. He never wavered. Today, I spent a bit of time rereading old messages and social media posts from him and I came across a picture of a roadmap to success that he had drawn on chart paper when he was in fifth grade. I got a little teary-eyed because every single thing he had listed on that chart, on that roadmap, has come to pass to this date. Now, he's taken a step back from this political area to deep dive into community activism and social enterprise. Because you know the power is in the people. And we need, we need and must desire a collect, have a desire for collective visioning and to be able to dream big. So I'm excited for what's to come. Through his years of service, Chris brought energy, vision, and genuine love for the people he represented. He worked tirelessly to uplift our community, be a champion for those voices needed to be heard, and to build opportunities where few existed before. His countless initiatives, large and small, reflect a heart of service and a belief that our community deserves the very best. As his mom, I am incredibly proud, not only for what he has accomplished, but for the integrity and the care in which he has done so. Chris has shown leadership is not about titles, but about service, empathy, and the courage and willingness to act. I recall telling many people that he was the community's child. I just happen to be his mother. And at some point, each and every one of you on this dais has been his uncle, his auntie, a cousin, family, or just a teacher who wanted to have a seat on the stage during the inauguration, cheering, clapping, traveling with him, hospital visits, some of the first to get the good news of major speaking engagements or college acceptance letters. Yet, and I will continue if I could because I just need to get this out, yet.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
The, the, the time limit has expired.
Okay. Well, I will close with this because I, I journal a lot and most of you know that. As a former council member here on this council, I just want to, I want to ask and plead and implore each of you that the, the young people are watching, you know, serve and lead with your heart, with, with anticipation, with hope, with clarity. The community, you know, this new activism of, of leadership is, is such a stronghold and desire for community leadership. I implore each of you, I'm talking, I implore each of you to just, to just do better and remember that the next generation of leaders are following and watching you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would there be another?
Rain Tindall.
Good evening. I'm Rain Tindall, I live at six-oh-two Pollock. I wanna first say thank you for fixing the storm drains. The community's comments to you are very important. The guy that lives on the corner always says something about the storm drains. And finally, they were fixed, so thank you for that. But I am a little concerned about the way we communicate with each other. It seems to me the only way to really talk to you is to come up here for three minutes. And I say that because I emailed everyone, including Rhonda Barwick and Deborah Thompson, about the comment link, the submittal for the comments. Now, uh, Mr. Hardy, yours bounced back. But maybe you should check your spam folder sometime. It seems that that link, I had gone to it several times and it said, sorry, coming soon, or nothing at all. And then I learned that it only opened up on Thursday before the meeting on Tuesday. And on Tuesday, of course, you have to have your comment in by three-thirty. Now, last meeting, there were at least ten people that reached out to me that said their comment was not read. We only had two comments read. That's important, especially if you want community engagement and they already feel like they don't listen. So if, if I can make a suggestion, it would probably help if you left the link up. And also some instructions there that say something like the link, the link will close at three-thirty on the day of the meeting and no comments received during the meeting will be read. and no comments received during the meeting will be read. But I don't know why you would take it down and put, take, sorry about that. That's my, hold on. I don't know why you would take it down and put it back up. Because the more you do that, the more chance of human error or technical error that you have. Why can't we just can't have it left there? And I'm sure Ms. Thompson has a folder to catch those particular emails. You know, everybody that is a little savvy does that. And then read them. We need you to do that. We need you to listen to us. We need you to look in your spam folder for the email that I sent you last Tuesday at three A.M., because I can't sleep sometimes, you know, I'm a caregiver for my son, so that's how that goes. But anyway, enough of that, if you could fix that, it'd be great. Um, but about the budget and the taxes. So I'm going to start asking now, before you even propose a budget. I think we should have fifty-five percent tax rate next year. Fifty-five. Because we need to recover from this year, since you say you can't help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Madam Clerk, would there be another?
Robert Jones.
My name's Robert Jones, two-two-oh-nine Riley Road. What's the name of that football team? Beg pardon? Savannah? Oh, okay. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much. Cougars, okay. The only reason I ask is, um, we had an NFL player come down last year and, uh, look at football, A.U., um, and I know it's taking up some of my time, but I'll go quick. Um, he said he couldn't find any facilities in the, uh, city of Kinston, and they actually had held their little camp, uh, out in Greenville, so. I want to send him that information, and hopefully, um, we could, he can work with some folks and, uh, get something done here in the city of Kinston. Okay, so now I'm going to move on, and real quick, I just, I want to address the people of Kinston. You guys, um, and I don't like doing this, but, uh, my wife's making me. If you live in the city of Kinston, if you own your house, you felt the pain. If you have a mortgage, if you haven't felt it, you're going to feel it. And if you rent, it's comp. Um, I think I spoke here once before, and I said then, that it wasn't a good look to do all this good stuff. The reason I said that, and I've stuck around and, Mr. Suggs, that attack, and you don't get me wrong. But you did say something at the end of the meeting, and it was pretty much like, you know, instead of, uh, it, it rounded out to something like, instead of coming up here with, uh, problems and stuff like that, bring some solutions. Somebody called and, and, and whatever, I remember that, so. I'm, um, I've reached out to the, um, I, I believe all of you guys, I've asked for, uh, a budget comparing departmental, um, the apartment budget to the managerial budget and all that good stuff. Haven't got nothing back yet, and I expect that's going to be coming soon. In addition to that, I just, um, just me personally, when you look at the increases in property taxes and all that good stuff, I, um, I have to say this, and I know it's not everybody, but it's kind of ironic that, uh, you guys give yourselves raises and you stick to your constituents. So hopefully, next year, um, you guys, uh, sign something and lower the budget and all that good stuff for us. I agree with Tindall and what she said. Other than that, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would there be another?
Jorge Gausach.
Good evening. My name is George Gausach.
George.
I live in two thousand and three, West Road, in Kinston. The reason why I ask, uh, permission to speak tonight is because we moved with my wife from New Jersey two years ago, and we chose Kinston more than anything else, because we have, we hear in New Jersey that Kinston was a very peaceful and a very nice town. Besides, the price on the houses were affordable. We couldn't afford any places. So we moved, and we bought a house, a beautiful house. And we have beautiful neighbors. And I got in touch with the law enforcement people here, chief of police. Matter of fact, I was already briefly working with, um, special force to communicate the police with people. The reason why I'm here is because we didn't expect to pay the taxes that we have to pay in the future. I find out that they do it every eight years, a reevaluation. But we're very, very concerned, because right now, I'm retired, my wife is still working, but when she retire, the money coming is not going to be enough for us to pay the mortgage and the taxes. And it seems to me, it's very easy to find out, that if young people don't stay in town, and old people retire and can't pay the taxes, Kinston is going to lose their more valuable asset, people. I think there's beautiful people, and that's the main, the main, uh, value of the town. Um, it seems to me that, I don't, I'm not an economist. I'm not aware of the infrastructure of the town. Uh, so there is a lot of things that I don't know, but I do know that I can't live in Kinston anymore if I can't pay the taxes. I have to sell the house and move out. And I don't want to do that. So I ask you, please, take in consideration and try to give us a break with the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would there be another?
Uh, as of three-thirty today, uh, Ms. Beechers Lane was the only electronically submitted, uh, public comment, will not be read. It was disseminated to all of the council members. And, um, they can read them at their leisure, or they should have read them before.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Adoption of the agenda. If a council member wishes to revise the agenda, the motion to add or delete an item will be entertained before the adoption of the agenda, of the agenda. Uh, Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that, uh, we're going to go in the closed section after, after the meeting, uh, for personnel matters. Uh, North Carolina General Statute, one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-point-eleven-eight-six. That'd be added to the agenda. Would there be any others? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion was made in the second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on November the third, twenty-twenty-five. Madam Clerk.
I don't have anything, sir.
Very well, entertain a, a motion, please.
Motion.
Motion was made in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Action agenda. Consider approval of change order two to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five road improvement project, and the amount of thirty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-three cents, based on the actual qualities installed, found on con, contract, contact. Cost will be one million, three hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Steve Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Purtem. The, um, resurfacing contract, which actually encompassed the funding for two years of resurfacing, uh, all the asphalt work has now been completed. Uh, we are reviewing final pavement markings, making sure all of that's correct. Um, the original contract amount, after the two years were added together, was one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Included resurfacing work on twenty-six different street sections around the city, uh, which is by far the most I think we've ever been able to accomplish in one project before. So I think most communities have seen some advantages from that. It certainly has helped our community, uh, with its appearance, by certainly having new asphalt. Uh, during construction, several of the streets were proposed to be milled. The cracking on them was so bad, that we wanted to mill the surface down and then res- pave back on top of it. On some of those streets, when we did that, we found that the asphalt level that was left was so small, that it broke apart when they were milling the part that was supposed to be removed. So they ended up going a little bit deeper and using a little bit more asphalt on them. Uh, so that is what has resulted in additional amount of asphalt above what was estimated for the project. The contract is unit prices, so we pay based on the amount of material that's actually used. Uh, so in the end, uh, there were some other areas that have saved a little bit, but we did have a total cost increase in the contract of thirty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-three cents above the contract price. Normally, when we do contracts of size, we ask for some contingency monies, uh, but we did not do that when we did the change order. We didn't have any contingency that we had left in the, in the, uh, award. So additional funds to cover that overage, uh, need to be added to the contract. The project fund, where this work is funded, uh, has ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents available in it. Uh, so the thirty-two thousand dollars can come from that, so no additional budget amendment or appropriation is needed. So I'm requesting tonight, the council approve a change order for thirty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars, twenty-three cents to complete the project. Funds coming from the funds that are existing in the project fund today.
Anything from the council?
Yes. Uh, I have, um, a question. Uh, I appreciate the number of streets that had to be resurfaced. And I'm interested in that milling process that was used when the asphalt was very, very thin. How effective do you think it would be when we resurface the streets the next time?
It's a good practice, as long as the asphalt depth is deep enough that there's a significant amount left. If we take the top, there's typically an inch that we try to mill down. If we remove that, and there's still an inch or more of asphalt remaining, it will hold together and will be fine. But it's when that remaining asphalt is very thin, and we find on older streets, whenever they were built, apparently they didn't put down two inches or more of asphalt. So when we do the milling, we've run across this a couple of times, where the remaining asphalt is very thin. So it's a very good process when the remaining asphalt is deep enough.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Well, Steve, I just want to thank you on your, um, your section for the hard work y'all did in getting these streets paved. You know, it's been, uh, comments about us and our streets being, not being paved. So we were glad we were able to put that much money into our, uh, streets this year, because I remember when I came onto the council the first time, I think we were putting about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the streets. So we have made a vast improvement. Um, these are the things that we, uh, receive from the public that we focus on. So we ask them to continue to, uh, bring us their complaints or concerns, and we'll work on them. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. This work was done with money from the two previous fiscal years. Uh, there is also six hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted in the current year for street resurfacing. We'll be back in January with a list of street candidates for you to look at, uh, to move forward with that contract in the spring.
If there's nothing else from the council, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion made in the second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Steve Miller.
Yeah, next, next item. Um, I have Malika Shroff here with me tonight. She is our N.C. fellow, y'all met her back in August. Uh, she's been working with us in our engineering group on several different projects that we're dealing with. Uh, but one of the prime ones she's been involved with lately has been our lead service line inventory. Uh, we started this a couple of years ago. I've asked her to come tonight and give you an update on where we're at today, uh, and what the next steps will be in our process regarding the lead water service lines.
All right. Uh, I'm just kidding. Okay. Oh, sorry. Okay, so the lead service line inventory and replacement project is mandated by the EPA. Basically, we have to find out what all of the materials are in all of the different service lines, and if any of them are a public health concern, we have to replace them. So the materials that can make up a service line can be lead, galvanized, copper, or plastic. And the service lines have a city-owned part and a, a customer-owned part. So you have to know the materials of both of the lines to classify the line overall. And those lines can be classified as lead, galvanized, requiring replacement, and non-led. Okay, so our initial inventory was submitted on October sixteenth of last year. Um, oh, sorry, these are just general things to know about this, but we have to send out annual customer notifications every year by Oc, I mean, November, so now. We just sent these out last week. Um, and we have to put together a ten-year replacement plan for any confirmed lead or galvanized lines that require replacement by October of twenty-twenty-seven. All right, so the EPA requires we replace the line when the service line is lead, meaning either part of the service line is lead. If the service line is, uh, galvanized on the customer-owned part and lead on the city-owned part, so galvanized and downstream led. Or if the service line is galvanized on the customer-owned part and downstream of a potentially lead source, which means that if the city-owned side was ever led, like historically. Um, the NCDQ, the Funding Agency for Lead Line Replacement, says that they'll fund any service line that is lead on either side, is galvanized and downstream led, and is galvanized but downstream of any kind of lead connector, like, like a lead gooseneck. But they won't fund, uh, any line that is galvanized and downstream an unknown line, or a line that has any kind of, like, his, like, it's historically unknown. So we don't know if that there's, has been led in the past. And that's a problem, because, um, the galvanized lines that are galvanized on the customer side, often there aren't any historic records for what material was on the city side in the past, before what it currently is. Because we can go and we can check right now and know that the, it's like plastic or something. But we don't know for sure whether or not it has ever been, uh, led in the past. And that's an issue, because the EPA requires that we replace those lines. But the NCDQ, which is the funding agency for this, is not willing to, uh, fund the replacement of those lines. Um, all right, so the current inventory, it was, uh, that's quite small for y'all to read. But, um, the, the, the sources of the inventory are three different contracted companies, One Twenty Water, Harry Riven Bark, and Tap Solutions, as well as our own surveyor. And the inventory, as it is now, is a mix of whatever historical records we do find, as well as, uh, just general data that we know, like, if, uh, uh, property was built after nineteen eighty-six, that we know that it can't be led, and that kind of stuff. For the most part, everything is done with, uh, field inspections. So just someone going out and physically looking at each and every one of those service lines. Uh, right, so as I already said, October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four is when the initial inventory was submitted. By November first, twenty-twenty-seven, we have to submit a ten-year plan for how we're going to, uh, finish the inventory slash replace everything, which puts this, December twenty-thirty-seven is when everything needs to be replaced and everything has to be, uh, inventoried and, uh, confirmed to be non-led. So the annual customer notifications, EPA requires that these be sent out every year, mid-November. The letters are sent out to every service line that is lead, galvanized, requiring replacement, or an unknown. So last year, we sent out about ten thousand lines. This year, we sent out about five thousand to like one thousand-ish to the galvanized and about four thousand to unknowns. This is just a general map of what has been done so far. It's pretty like, I mean, it's not very zoomed in, so you can't see super well. But the non-leds, as well as the unknowns, are pretty scattered all around. But our current, the guy who's currently surveying it is like systematically going through the neighborhoods that haven't been checked yet and checking them. The majority of the unknowns are in downtown Kinston and like kind of just central Kinston in general. So the key takeaway is suppose that we're currently still in the process of completing the inventory. That's all going on. We don't have any confirmed lead service lines, like as of right now. And pretty much all of the galvanized requiring replacement lines are requiring replacement because they're downstream, a service line that doesn't have a historical record that can confirm that it was not led. So, yeah. And, yeah, the funding means that we have to figure out where we're gonna find that money still for the lines that we don't know historically if they were led. So, yeah. I think that's all.
All right, so I get kind of a little summary of where we're at. There's a disconnect between the funding for lead service lines and the regulation for what has to be replaced. So that's one issue we're facing. The good news is the inventory that we've been doing, the ones that we have visited in the field, we have not found any lead. Like Malika said, the ones that we have found that are galvanized, that need to be replaced, are almost all ones that are where we could not determine what the original material was. We inspected today, it's not lead. But under the rule, they're saying if it was ever led, even if it's not today, you still would have to replace it if it's galvanized. It doesn't make a lot of sense. If there's not any lead in the service today, why would you have to replace it? But that is the rule. So when we, as we work through the rest of the inventory and we visit the rest of the services, and our goal is to visit every service by the time twenty twenty seven gets here, and we will figure out where we're at, and we will probably have some conversations with the state and the funding agency to figure out exactly what it is we would need to replace in Kinston if we have not found lead pipes. So we're gonna be working on that, we'll continue to do that. My hat's off to our staff. It's doing these inventories, it's time-consuming. It actually physically involves going in front of somebody's house where their meter is, digging up the pipe on both sides of the meter, seeing what material is, and writing it down, keeping the records. And Malika is doing, putting all of the database together of these records from the field and helping us figure out and keep up with where we're at each day, each month, each year as we're moving through this. So it's a lot of data right now, a lot of work going on. We're still working on it. We didn't want you to think we've forgotten about it. But at this point, like she said, one of the key points is that even though we have some funding for replacements, we do not have enough to do all the galvanized lines if we had to do them. And we don't have any that have been identified that would be eligible for the funding. So we're kind of in a catch twenty-two on that side. But the plans for replacements, the replacements don't have to start until twenty twenty seven. If we have some we need to replace, we've got some funds we could get started earlier if we do have to replace them. So Malika, I'd be glad to answer any questions y'all may have.
Steve, is there any possibility of future grants that might help the funding of replacing these lines?
There are additional grants, it's through the same agency and the same terms. So there are still ones, they're gonna have that same regulation, that if you don't know what the service was, they're not gonna pay for it.
So a lot of it was downstream, so if it was downstream, that would be on the city side and not the customer side, correct?
The water flows from us to the customers, so the customer's at the end of the stream. So they are downstream. Good question.
I'm sorry. Anything further from the council?
No, just thank you, Mr. Steve, for this update. And Malika, thank you for the update on where we currently are. And thank you all for continuing this work because I know it was a very big topic last year. You all started the, or the year before last, we all started the lead service line inventory and notifying residents. I know there were a lot of questions and stuff that came back from the first notifications. So hopefully people will continue to stay in the loop and reach out if they have any concerns. I do know that there was a lot of funding that began, yeah, began getting made available by the previous federal administration last year around lead service line replacement. And as that federal funding landscape changes, I think it'll be up to the council and our community to continue advocating for the state to fund the programs at DEQ, but also we can get our elected representatives in Congress as well to investigate on the federal level. Because communities like Kinston, this is a mandate that the federal government imposed on us that we have to replace all these lines. And these type of mandates need to come with funding and support from the federal government as well, so.
All right, thank you, Steve. Item number three on the city council agenda, information only, electrical system financial review. Steve Miller.
All right, I'll be out of here in a minute. At the last meeting, we talked about a little bit whether anything additional could be done as far as changes in the electric rates that we did back in October. Just kind of as a refresher, in October, we reduced the rates four percent in our residential, commercial, small general service, medium general service classes. So all of those rate classes saw a four percent reduction in each fee that's on their schedule. Their usage fee, their demand fees, their base charges, all of them were reduced four percent. We didn't have any changes in some of the other classes. The other classes are smaller, they're like municipal class, there's a church and school class, those things. Church rates actually closed. So for ninety-five percent of our customers, they were all part of the groups that were seeing this reduction. We said when we did this that our hope would be able to hold this rate until twenty thirty. That was our goal. So we don't have to have any increases on our customers until we get to that period. On average, for an average residential customer, that four percent reduction was about six dollars a month in the bill. So seventy-two dollars a year is what the customers would see on that. Just to give some people idea, they might not really understand what our electric system is, but our electric system goes way outside the city. We cover about two-thirds of Lenore County. On the map that I've got up, the black outline in the middle of the blob there is the limits of the city. And you can see our electric system, which is in red, goes miles outside of the city. In all, probably half our customers are outside the city. So they are not within the city, they're not taxpayers, they're not part of that class that's going on. Couple other things on our customers, just to make sure everybody's aware. Even inside the city, Duke Energy serves some customers inside the city. We have some subdivisions that are served by Duke Energy, Mount Vernon Park, Randomwood, Frenchman's Creek. These are areas that are served by Duke Energy and not the City of Kinston Electric System. Also, our main commercial corridors like Highway seventy, Highway eleven, two fifty-eight, parts of the west part of Vernon Avenue, Duke Energy is present on those areas too and has customers in those areas. So those folks, they do not see our rate changes at all, regardless of what type of property it is. Property owners and tenants, something else just to be thinking about is that anything that we do where the person paying the utility bill is not owning the property, they may not see equal changes. If you're seeing tax changes or utility changes, the same person may not see those at the properties. Sure, property owners, if they have tenants, may pass those down, but exactly how they pass them down or how much they change things, that's gonna be in their hands. It's not really anything that the city can control, either for utility changes or tax changes. Also, nonprofits are star of electric customers. We've got quite a few of them, and they are not paying any property taxes. So again, overall, if we do, if you did changes to the electric like we did, when we did four percent reduction, half those people are outside of the city. So just so you're aware of that. Something else to think about, we looked at this, we have several groups that do estimates that we looked at in preparing for that four percent reduction. We had a contractor do the cost of service study. They projected what our expenses would be, what our revenues would be, and made estimates and future forecasts on where we would be for the next few years. Electric Cities provides the same type of forecast for us on the wholesale costs every year. They'll provide a forecast for the next three or four years for us to see what they think our usage and our bills will be from them. And then we also have a consultant that does quarterly financial updates for us. They look at where we're at, what revenues we've collected, where they think we will be at the end of the current fiscal year. They don't look beyond that, it's just year to year. But they're trying to make sure that we stay on track each year as we're doing our, as we move through the year. So of all those estimates for the costs, our adopted budget is toward the lower part of that. It is based on what our quarterly financial forecaster is looking at, and it's close to that. We didn't budget costs as high as the cost of service study said or as high as Electric Cities said. We feel like that the financial guy that's working at this every quarter is a lot closer to what we're doing and has been pretty accurate over the years as far as our costs. So you look at all those, I mean, there's a spread of six hundred thousand dollars between these estimates of what our costs would be this year. The costs vary, the rate it gets set. Duke tells, it works out with Electric Cities, what they're gonna charge Electric Cities for your cost per KWH and your cost per KW. So we get that pretty well set. But what you don't know is what the usage is gonna be. That's where these estimates really come in. Electric usage depends on a lot of things. It depends on what your customers need. If this customer puts in a EV car and a charging station, their use is gonna go up. If this person moves out and this property goes vacant, you don't have any usage there. So those things change. The other thing that changes as far as usage is weather. Weather is a huge factor in what our energy bills are every month. So if our weather is really hot or really cold, energy uses go up. If it's mild, and we've had some mild months, if you have that type of situation, energy bills go down because you're not using it. Air conditioning and heating are probably your biggest draws of energy at any property. So those things all affect what we have. And these wholesale costs, again, these aren't the only costs the city has. These are about sixty-four percent of what we have in our budget every year. So it's a big amount of the cost, but we still have other operating costs that we have every year too. All right, a little bit about what's part of the bill we get from Electric Cities, just to remind everybody. There's several pieces to it. Even the FR costs that are in this slide at the very top, there's lots of little pieces to that. The biggest pieces are what Duke charges Nacampa and Electric Cities for the energy that's used. But the debt payoff is part of that. All these riders down below, their, Duke, when they set their rate every year, that's based on estimates. And then at the end of the year, if their estimate's wrong, they get to collect what it was off by. So they come back to Nacampa. If they didn't collect enough money from Nacampa and they say, hey, you owe us another thirty, forty, fifty million dollars, then we end up with a true-up, an extra cost we have to pay for the next twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months, whatever we set it up to be. So all those riders are part of that. The ones in blue were ones that were considered in the cost of service study. The ones in orange, we're not. At the last meeting that we had with the rate committee at Nacampa, they mentioned rider one twenty-five, that there will be a rider for this year. They're already estimating, but their estimates even for that range from ten million dollars to twenty-five million dollars that Nacampa may be charged by Duke as part of the true-up. It will take them another year to figure out what exactly that will be and how they're gonna charge that. So we just showed that out there to see that. And so we've now had four consecutive years of true-ups. Any reason to think there wouldn't be a fifth year? I don't know, I put it up there. If there is one, we just have to make sure that we're thinking about those things moving forward, that we may have that cost to face as well. All right, a couple of other things that we do deal with every year in our budget, sales. We budget sales, and that's what we had in the cost of service study, is this is how much revenue we think we would make. What they didn't include in that is that there's a little percent that we don't collect. People that don't pay their bills, that walk out leaving balances, and we end up having to cover that cost ourselves out of our funds. So that's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year that we have to pay that way. I talked about the revenue forecast range, that variance in those forecasts. The April rate change that is projected to be four and a half percent, we are here in November now, and we still don't know what exactly that will be. They probably will not know that until at the earliest late January, maybe after that. It depends on when Duke works out their numbers and tells us what they're gonna be charging in the future. So at this point, we don't know for sure if it will be four and a half, or if it will be three, or if it'll be five. It's the estimate. So we're just dealing with that. It could be something different from what they're telling us. And lastly, in the current budget, if you look at the budget that was adopted this year, there were no excess fund. We included having this rate reduction that we did in our budget estimates when we adopted the budget. But there is no money going to fund balance, there's no money going to rate stabilization. There are no extra funds in the current budget that we aren't using for something. Now, whether that would be exactly the same next year or not, you know, once we find out what's gonna happen in April, and maybe what's gonna happen next year, maybe we'll know for sure. But we don't know at this point exactly what it'll be in the future. All right, in, like I said, the year after that, the further out you get your forecast, you have more variables. You just less things that you know about. Again, will customer usage change in twenty twenty seven? That's another year away, who knows? The Duke merger we talked about, if that Duke merger goes through, we don't know what the impacts would be. We haven't seen it yet. And if it does go through, what they have talked about as far as effective date is not, it would not be effective until January of twenty twenty seven. So if there is any savings from that, we won't know until we get close to that time. There's another four and a half percent rate increase projected for next April. Again, it's just an estimate, it's based on what they think is gonna happen. Rider one twenty-five, we talked about. We haven't even talked about the operating costs. The electric system, water system, sewer system, the general fund sees the same price pressures that our customers see if they go to the store. We have accounts at Walmart, Big Blue, Lowe's, we're buying things just like everybody else is buying from these stores. And when those costs go up, our costs go up because we have to buy the same things. So we're faced with that type of thing every year too. All right, so with all the variables we got, with the fact that we don't have any excess funds in the current budget going to fund balance or rate stabilization, I would not recommend trying to make any other change in the current fiscal year. I just don't see where you could do that. You'd have to appropriate money from fund balance to do it. And then you may raise the eyebrows of the local government commission if you're not covering your expenses from your revenues. So we'll see what happens with that. We'll see, and hopefully we'll get toward the end of January, we'll know what's gonna happen in April with the wholesale changes. We'll see if that's gonna be any different from what they forecasted. And then moving forward, we just, like I said, the weather and everything else may vary what exactly we have to pay this year as far as expenses and revenues. Now, one thing I will say, if the expenses, the wholesale costs are different because the usage is different, yes, if the wholesale cost changes up or down, your revenue's gonna change up or down because a lot of those are based on the usage. But there's a small margin in there between what we pay for the wholesale costs and what we use for our operating costs that we need because a lot of our operating expenses don't go away. We still have to fix the broken poles, the transformers, the meters. We have to go out there if the power goes out. We have staff costs, things like that, that don't change. They're pretty much set. So we are hoping that we have the revenue covered coming in that would be able to cover that. So that's why when we look at, we budget our expenses, we budget it toward the low end for that wholesale cost, so lower usage. And if it's higher, that's great. But that way, we hopefully are covered for all our operating costs. So there was a lot of information, there's a lot of stuff that goes into these forecasts and trying to figure out where you're at and what you got available. That's why it took us several months to try to figure out how much rate reduction could we do and still make sure that we have protected ourselves in case anything should happen and not have to have a rate increase. So I hope that's information for you that's useful. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions on that.
Anything further from the council?
A more defined explanation. And especially, you know, you're referencing, you know, operations and those things that sometimes, you know, do happen, such as, you know, stations, you know, needing major repair and things of that nature.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Steve, and the detail into your...
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Steve, and the detail into your recommendation. I did just want to clarify something, you know, to say hit dogs holler. And so there was a statement that was made earlier in terms of the utilities' customers here in Kinston. And it said that nonprofits don't, don't pay taxes. There are a number of churches and nonprofits in Kinston that do. You have to apply for a tax exemption if you want a local property tax exemption, but that was included in the presentation and the meeting materials. I just wanted to clarify that for the community, churches, nonprofits, hospital systems, they all can apply for an exemption if they want, but not all of them opt to do so.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? If not, we'll go to item number four. Consider adoption or ordinance to close out the Riverwalk project, phase one, phase two, phase three, G9135, Ms. Donna Goodson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In May of 2014, the city council approved the establishment of a capital project fund to fund the Riverwalk project that was needed to provide alternate means of transportation for the community to promote recreation, health, fitness, and economic growth for the community. And there were several funding opportunities to include Federal Highway Association, Federal Highway Administration grant, a grant from the NC Department of Transportation, a grant from the NC Division of Parks and Recreational Trails, and a transfer from fund, from general fund. The project, I'm not sure what the, its historical background was, I couldn't find any notes in, in my work, but the project was never initiated and no expenditures were satisfied. And as you well know, the county has now been approved for the same project. And the operating budget amendment addresses our portion, they're asking us to contribute towards their project. So in lieu of that, I'm asking that we close, officially close this project and we'll be moving the $25,000 back to the general fund, which help offset the over $300,000 that we're going to asking you to, or you better approved, to assist the county in their project of the Riverwalk improvements. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions.
Anything from the council? If not, entertain a motion? Motion was made in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number five, consider adoption of the 2025-26 operating budget amendment, Ms. Donna Goodson.
Thank you again, Mayor Protem. In your packet is a request to, an amendment for the annual operating, operating budgets for the general fund and the wastewater funds. Most notably is the assistance for the Neuse River Greenway that we have agreed to assist with the county. And they will, they will invoice us as, as they progress on the project. So we are asking for the $334,950 on that. And the other most notable one is the closing of the, of the two projects that we're going to put back into the general fund. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything else? Here in the, entertain a motion?
Second.
Motion was made in a second, all in favor say aye. And opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number six, consider approval of revisions, revisions to the mayor and council travel policy, Councilman Suss.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Tonight you all have in your packet an updated policy statement on mayor and council travel. As many of you remember, we adopted the first modern version of this policy in 2023. It replaced the old policy, old policy that the city had not updated since early 1980s, so nearly 40 years. After putting that policy that we introduced in 2023 in place for the last two years, it's become clear there are some areas where we want to strengthen accountability, consistency, and just how we handle travel as elected officials. So the revisions you have in front of you include more direct expressions regarding itemized receipts, a straightforward per diem system for meals rather than the current process of doing it with our P cards, and then given just more general detail, general but detailed guidance on how we use our city-issued purchasing cards. These updates were based on feedback we got from staff, community members, and the finance department. And they also bring us in line with the best practices followed by other cities across the state and country. So I hope that we can approve this tonight, just so that as our council members continue to advocate, travel, grow professionally on behalf of the city of Kinston, we're just doing it in a way that's consistent and accountable to the people we serve.
Councilman Suss, I just would like to add a link that Ms. Thompson sent out yesterday and to your revision. And however, I would like to take out the paragraph after the 100% of per diem, the also when meals are furnished at no additional cost. Most of the time we go to these functions or these meetings, they give us hors d'oeuvres sometimes, or not complete meals. And sometimes the meals aren't buffet meals or whatever the case may be. So if we just strike out that last paragraph, I'd be fine with the revision.
Anything else from the council?
The only thing I will add, the email, the link that Ms. Debra sent, I don't know if we want to add that specifically to the policy, just, that would be a process. I think the, the language I have in here says something about the standardized process for turning in receipts, and that might change at some point depending on whatever process and system. But for clarity for everyone, the city's current banking system with Truist allows us to email receipts directly to Truist. That process could change at any point depending on the banking system. So I would say, I think the language in here says for us to turn in our receipts in a timely manner, whatever the standardized process is. So I would keep that language as that is, and we turn in the receipts however the process is determined by our staff and our bank.
So I'm going to entertain a motion with the change of taking out the, the provision that, uh,
I agree.
Paragraph that Mr. Swenson put forth. So I entertain a motion with that.
Motion?
Second.
Motion was made in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries.
May I have, may I have one point of clarification? If you use the per diem, per IRS regulations, you don't have to turn in your meal receipts, which is a great, tremendous help to you. So that's one of, that's one of the advantages of doing this, so your receipts would be much easier to, to maintain.
Item number seven, consider approval.
Mr. Hardy, if, if I could take a moment and personal privilege, because I heard some rumbling. So to clarify the per diem process, this is how most companies, organizations, any other governmental institution, other boards that I've been a part of, even the state government, when we travel on behalf of that entity, they give us a per diem. And it's determined by the IRS and the General Service Administration based on what city you're traveling to. So if I have to spend a day in Charlotte for a conference, the per diem for that day might be $12 for breakfast, $26 for lunch, and $28 for dinner. So how that works is that entity gives me that money directly. So whatever that total is, you know, 70, 80 something dollars, gives that to me directly to use all my meals however I want. So that usually turns out to be a lot cheaper than what it would cost if the city just outright, we swipe the city card or whatever, you know, organization card to pay for our meals because lunch probably costs, or a little bit more than $12, or breakfast might cost a little bit more than $12. But we have that per diem, that is like the standard average rate of a breakfast or a lunch in that community.
Thank you, Councilman Suss, for that clarification. Consider approval of the policy statement on the lease of the city-owned facilities and properties. Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. This item is to propose property lease policy, which was presented in the last council meeting. There was a request to table it because of a concern regarding nonprofits and residential leases. But just for background, as you all know, in recent years, we've handled several lease requests with the gate, the old fire station, the office spaces in the community center. And each, each of those was done a little differently, a little differently. So this policy doesn't necessarily change our process, but just standardize the process and the precedence that we set with those previous leases. It clears the authority with the council to approve or deny leases and gives us a process for annually reviewing those leases and making sure that those requests are documented and brought before the council. I'm glad to answer any questions or entertain any revisions.
Anything from the council? I, I just want to say one thing.
No, you don't.
Go, go ahead. I just want to say on that, these, these property leases and, and everything, we'll, we will have a public hearing on them and the council will review them after we have the public hearing. So everything seems, to me, it seems to be the right direction to move in.
The only thought that I had towards it was the, like, the residential properties. And again, as council member said, it's only given thought to some of those 501(c)(3)'s, such as SAFE, RAD, Friends of the Homeless. So, so that's my, that's my only thought about, you know, those, those properties. And, you know, then I also think that, I don't know, I'm not really sure, but that might be something that the incoming council may want to look at. That's the only concern I have is about the rental, the residential leases. The other part, I, I love it, it's just the residential lease part that I am concerned about. And, and it's those given properties. You know, those 501(c)(3)'s, such as those stated earlier.
Are there any particular properties you're talking about? Because I think that was the reason for including this in the policy is because the city does not own any residential properties. So we, I'm not sure if it's worth this.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, because it, it states it, I mean, it's, it's stated here. And you just never, I mean, know what's going to happen in the future.
So are you proposing a change?
I would, I would take that part out.
The residential part out?
Right, I mean, I just, I just, you know, that's the part that I would, I would take out only because we don't know what the future holds in acquiring possible residential properties.
I just, I don't want us to get into the purpose of convoluting a process over a kind of hypothetical that the council, like, the purpose of this policy was because the council previously expressed a desire not to want to lease any residential policies, uh, properties at all. So if it's now the desire of the council to go out and buy residential properties and get in the landlord business, you know, you know, your, your pleasure, but I don't think it's in the best, the city's best interest honestly to get into the landlord business, and that's why I included this. There's so many changes we're seeing nationally with how tenants and landlords operate. That's a very demanding and exhausting business to get into that our staff are now, who already have limited capacity, would now have to be responsible for managing the leases of residential property. I don't think the city of Kinston wants to be a landlord, and I don't think too many of our citizens want us to be a landlord. So I say we don't need to get into the business of leasing residential property.
Anything else, anything else from the council? Ms. Blunt, would you like to entertain?
I just had the same question, if was there a particular property that you're referring to? Because the list of properties that I have, there aren't any structures that, there may be some property in residential, but we currently don't have any structures in residential zoning districts. So that would be my only, I'd be quite concerned legally how the city can get involved in leasing housing property. I'm not sure about that.
But when we, when we're speaking of the residential properties, we're speaking of properties that are in residential areas?
Right, they're vacant.
Right.
Yeah, they're vacant. And even most of the properties that we have obtained, either, you know, the house has been demo or they were vacant when we got them. So we get a lot of commercial buildings, but I have yet to deal with an actual residential that belongs to the city.
So with this, with that, would that erase the possibility, so if we're leasing a property, an organization such as SAFE, could they, could they put something on that property, on a leased property?
You mean like in a, a commercial building?
Like say for instance, they wanted you to park an RV there. Say for instance, like for those families that are, you know what I'm saying, fleeing, you know, domestic situations. And they have like a, like a mobile unit, like a mobile home. And then this mobile home moves, you know what I'm saying, as needed. And they chose to put it on one of those leased properties. How does that, how would that work?
Well, the land use wouldn't be considered like residential. It would be considered either a governmental agency or a community organization. It would be a totally different land use than an apartment. So that may be able to be permitted in a residential zoning district, but it would not be considered an apartment complex, does that make?
So, so that would be permissible?
Right.
Yeah, based on the policy, that would be permissible, what you're explaining now.
Because it wouldn't be considered apartments. We would still consider it more like a commercial type use, even though it may be occupants of that particular organization that are staying there.
Because what you just described, SAFE would own the actual housing structure on the property, you know, if you use a mobile home. The lease would be then between the city and state, the SAFE for the vacant lot. And so that's the only lease agreement. So the city can lease whatever property, you know, vacant lot we want to whoever. But, and then if SAFE decides to put a structure on that property, that then makes SAFE the landlord for her, whatever tenant they put inside of that structure. So that's not anyway hindered by this policy.
Right.
My recommendation has always been not to get into the residential rental business. But saying that, there have been a couple of times where it seemed like a good idea at the time. And, and an example would be where the city was acquiring a residence that was occupied. And there was some type of a lease arrangement post-closing that would allow that occupant to remain on the property. It, it's a rare occasion, but it, it has happened. But generally, I would say no, you do not want to be a landlord with city property, not, not residential property. And, and really not commercial property too.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. So now entertain a motion for item number seven. Entertain a motion?
Motion?
Motion was made in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, consider approval of a special permit event request from DKR Annual Christmas Parade. Keep going.
Well, thank you, sir. This is for DKR, this is the annual Christmas parade. There have been no changes from previous, previous years. Once again, there will be no candy thrown at this event. It's going to take place on Saturday, December 6, 2025, from 4:30 PM to around 9:00 PM, whenever the, the event finishes up, which is roughly around 8:00. But the permits, good till 9:00. It's going to go the same route as far as going, starting at Grandeur Stadium, traveling southbound on, on Queen Street. Every police officer for the Kinston Police Department, with the exception of the officers that are working that day and that night, will be working. So we'll have adequate security there. As far as restrooms go, there, people will use nearby businesses for, for restrooms. The city of Kinston is listed as the insurance certificate holder and we do not have any issues with this whatsoever, so.
Mr. Attorney, let me. All right, entertain a motion?
Motion?
A motion was made in a second, all in favor say aye. And opposed say nay. Motion carries. Appointments, item number nine, consider appointment to the Board of Adjustment Planning Board, Ms. Elizabeth Blunt.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In your packet, yes.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, I want-
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry. I wanted to get clarification on the, are we taking out the residential statement or we're leaving it in?
The motion.
As is, okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
In your package was the application for Matthew Pollak to be a member of the planning board slash Board of Adjustment. We are always recruiting for those boards, and so I ask that the council please approve him so that he can be a member of our board.
All right, anything from the council? Here in, entertain a motion.
Second.
A motion was made in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to ask Leon Steele to step forward to tell us about all the events we've got going on this weekend. While he's walking forward, I'm sorry to see that Mr. Jones had left, I think. But our finance director did reply to his request for information late today, so he should have that when he gets home. But as for the others that may have similar questions that he had, our complete budgets, I'm years back, are all on the website. You can see an itemized list of all the accounts that the departments asked for alongside of the managers recommended for what we were able to fund. There is what we call a justification page that tells you, it itemizes what's in those accounts. There's also a schedule that's attached to that, should they have more listening to do. So all that information is out there. I'd encourage you to look through that when you have time. There's also audits. There's, the finance director is currently working on our audit for this year. She's deep with the, the crews every day, trying to get that information out. But you can go on the website today and see ones from previous years. They have, even though you might not be an accounting kind of person, they have good summaries, the message back and forth to the council to detail what they've seen. Also, remind the audience that the agenda, the exact information that the council receives is placed on our website the day that it is delivered to the council. You don't just get the sheet like you see when you come in here with the cover. You get all the meats and potatoes, the same thing that they get. And we'd love for you to read through it and have any questions, you contact your council members or contact us, and then we'll answer as best we can. There's a lot of information on our website, and we'd love for you to have access to it. I think it will make you understand what we do in the meetings a lot better. So I'm going to get off my soapbox right now and ask Leon Steele to tell us about the fun things we've got going on this weekend.
Thank you. This weekend, we've got the Turn On the Holidays Celebration at Pearson Park at six o'clock on Saturday evening. Santa Claus will be there. You can take pictures with your children and family. We may have a couple of cosplayers there like Thor and Spider-Man from before. We may even have Mr. Fantastic. There may be some other people they haven't committed to revealing that information to me yet, but they are planning to be there. We'll also be turning on the Christmas cards, the six-foot-tall giant Christmas cards. We'll have forty of those in the park. They'll be lit up that night. Please enjoy that. That's the Christmas card lane. That was a lot of, a lot of local businesses supported that effort, and we're very grateful for that. Then on Saturday, well, actually on Saturday, there's an event at, during the day at the farmer's market. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Lorraine and Vivian Howard will be doing something. And they've got a lot of Thanksgiving, fall, and, and Christmas vendors there with, with items. So, you know, if you're going to be going to someone's house for Thanksgiving or Christmas and you need to take a, you know, a house present, go down to the farmer's market and check it out and take some goodies with you as while you're at it too. Then on Saturday, December second, December sixth, we have the Christmas parade, which starts at four thirty. It departs Granger Stadium at four thirty. And by the way, registration for the parade closes this Friday. So don't procrastinate and all of a sudden wake up and realize that you need to be in the parade. Think of it right now and do that. You can register online at downtownkinston.com. You can pass by our office and pick, we'll print you out an application. First responders and schools are always free, and we've got room for you in the parade. Come on, let's make it big. We'll be broadcasting that live on News News, social media, the day of the parade. It will be broadcasting at a new location this year instead of the Kinston Enterprise Center. We're very happy to announce that we will be live streaming from in front of the Paramount Theater in all of its new brilliant lit-up marquee glory. So come out and have a good time, and we'll see you at the park Saturday, and we'll see you at the parade on the first Saturday of December. Thanks.
All right, anything from Mr.?
Just one point. We all know there've been some protests pending with the Board of Elections, and they are working through their required process. But just a, a forewarning to Councilman Swenson and Councilman Suggs that state law provides that elected officials continue to serve until their successors are duly qualified.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anything from the council? Anything at all from the council?
I'm still planning for this to be my last meeting, so I am hoping that the Board of Elections continues to address the concerns that have been brought up swiftly and democratically and in accordance with state law and our state constitution. Yeah, that, that brings me to my point of what I was going to share kind of in light of this meeting. There's just been such an increase in, or such a decrease in civility and an increase in divisiveness and polarization and attacks that is not the Kinston that I know. And maybe it is for some folks older than me, but it's not the Kinston that, you know, encouraged me as a young child to want to be a part of this community, to volunteer and be a part of every club and church program and community event that I could, that even at the, you know, hesitation and the demands from my, my mom and my dad and my grandma and my older siblings, you know, go off to college, be great, be successful, and don't come back here. That's the encouragement that my family gave me. But I didn't, I didn't want to believe that. I didn't want to admit that that was the reality of our community. I knew that there is love here, that there's hope here, that there's people who look out for each other and pray for each other, and people who know how to make the best out of the worst situations. And that love, that resilience, that care is what drove me back to Kinston in two thousand twenty-one, even before graduating. Like, I knew I was, I was so certain I was coming back home that before I even walked across the stage at Carolina, I had to sign a lease to move back to Kinston because I was like, I'm coming back home. I care so much about my community. And I filed to run for seat account so about a month, month and a half after graduating because I wanted to be a part of leading and shaping this community. And over the four years I've been on council, I believe I've been able to do that and accomplish that with my colleagues here on the council, that even when sometimes we've had a, some division on the council and lack of shared vision and shared direction on where we want the city to go. At the end of the day, and even in spite of what you see in the news and the chaos that you see now, we have accomplished some great things for this city, and I want us to be proud of that. I want us to be able to celebrate that and to be, be assured in that we have done a lot of the right things. We haven't gotten everything right, and there are people who are, some people hurting more than others because of decisions that we've unfortunately had to make as a body, but that we have acted on the information that's been presented in front of us, and we've always felt that we were making those decisions in the best interest of our city. And that is what helps me be comforted at night. I want to share some appreciation for my mom who came tonight. I wasn't expecting her to come and, and share that gratitude for me, but I appreciate it. It was a pleasant and much-needed surprise. And ironically, right after someone who has made some direct personal attacks against me. And on that note, let me be clear that I've said before that if it were legally sound and financially responsible for us to adjust our tax rate right now, I would support it. But the facts have been clear that regrettably, it's not. And now there are some members of our community who are hurting because of the tax values and tax bills increasing. But in the midst of their concerns about that, there's been a person who quite recently called me a kid, a dummy, who has no clue what he was doing. And, you know, it's that type of rhetoric, you know, people, you know, just being so demeaning and demoralizing that comforts me in my decision to step away and step back from politics and step away from being such a public-facing role in the community. Most of the people in this community have watched me grow up, have always known me to be a kind, respectable and respectful young man. And I strive to walk in that straight and narrow character every single day. But the lack of civility I've seen in this community, the way people have just made things not about public service, not even just about politics, but make things so personal, it's disheartening. And I, you know, I'm so proud of myself that I've gone four and a half, well, four years without cussing somebody out. Like, I'm very proud of that because people truly don't know how to treat each other with respect anymore. They don't know how to talk with each other anymore. And so I just want to thank this community for trusting me with being your city council member for these last four years. I hope that even if we haven't agreed on everything, even if you haven't liked everything that I've done, that I've done something to make you proud and something to make you feel like I was helping to move this city in the right direction. I want to share some appreciation for our staff. You all have been amazing to work with. Thank you for being able to be receptive to a young person, a twenty-one-year-old coming in and saying, I've got this idea for your department or this policy I want to change, and you all being open to my feedback and being able to, us being able to bounce ideas off of each other. I've been really, really gratified by that, to have that support system, that willingness to work cooperatively with you all. And so, you know, my advice to our community is just to, you know, stay engaged, but let's be engaged positively. My advice to leadership is to be engaged, to be straightforward and tell people the truth. If you're going to vote no on something, tell them why you're voting no on something. If you're going to vote yes, be able to explain and justify your yes. I think people want transparency, they want communication. We hear it so often. I think it's up to us to give that to them. So, you know, I, I, I might say something very quite polished or whatever. I know the council usually presents a little plaque or something. So whenever I get my plaque, at the la, at the actual final meeting, I'll, I'll say some very positive two-minute remarks. I won't go on and on like I've been doing these last few minutes. But it just means a lot to have had the honor to serve this city, to be able to be a council member in the city that has made me and shaped me. And I want us to get back to the city where young people like myself, my peers, the young people coming up feel like they want to come back home and that they have a voice and a stake and a role in this community, that there's something here for them, that there's something here, somebody here for them too, people here to celebrate them and encourage them. It has been some isolating times being on this council, being a young person on this council, a young person in leadership. And so I encourage all the leaders, whether you're in an elected role or an appointed role or a church or school or whatever, to be receptive to the young people, to check on them, to mentor them and offer guidance. We'll listen, but we just, we need that support and that encouragement, and I want more young people to feel like they have a role here in Kinston.
Anything else, councilmembers? I just want to say on behalf of the Honorable Mayor Don Hardy, who's not here with us this evening, that we pray that he has safe travel. And also, I want to thank our police department. I sat in a, in a PACE meeting this week, and I looked at some of the numbers of the, of the crime and the age. And I noticed that the crime for fifteen to seventeen-year-olds have dropped. But age ten to fourteen has doubled crime in our city. And when I saw those numbers, I was disappointed. I was hurt because I advocate my life on helping young people. I'm on the rec committee, and Josh, you're sitting here, and you know the things that I do for the rec department. And, and not just the rec department and young kids, but I, I, my mother raised me to try to help anybody that I can. And when I go through this city and I see people that are struggling and, and people that have issues, that's why I come out on mine, put my phone number on, on my card. My personal phone number. Because people call me and they ask me to come out, like the lady talked about her drain being fixed. I've been out in my own vehicle and cleaned out drains. And whatever anybody asks me to do, it's, it's in my heart to try to help. And a lot of people, we get criticized as council members for what we don't do. But we never, ever hear the good things that we do do. You know, I was told a long time ago, you can do a thousand good things in your life. Do one thing wrong, that's what everybody will remember. And, and I piggyback on what Chris has said. I left here when I was a young man, went in the service for thirty-one years. I had no plans ever coming back to this city, no plans. But my mother got ill, and I came back to take care of her because I would give anything for the woman who brought me into this world. And when I came back, I were encouraged to run for this position by people in this community. And I have been ridiculed, torn apart, talked about anything negative you can think in your mind have been said about me since I've been serving on this council. But I'm not going anywhere. So y'all might as well just put it in your mind, Mayor Protem Hardy ain't going nowhere. I'm going to continue to serve this community until the man take me away from here. And I'm going to leave that with that. Thank you. Entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
Motion was made in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. We're now back in an open session. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion was made in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries.